Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the June 19th, 2019, meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We are delighted to have each of you with us. At this time, Ms. La Magna will review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas are available in the front of the room, on the table to my right. All the exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted on the bulletin board. Please feel free to view the exhibits at any time during tonight's meeting. You are required to fill out a yellow form to speak before the City Commission during the business meeting. The yellow forms are located next to Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Allison Brown. You must complete the sections that ask for your name, address, agenda item number, signature, and date. The form must be completed and placed in the designated box. Items on the agenda for first reading usually do not allow for public participation. However, there are some instances where citizens are allowed to speak on first-reading items when they are considered public hearings. Items on the agenda for second reading are open for public hearing, and citizens may speak at the designated time. Resolutions under Administrative Item Number 10 are open for public comments, and you may fill out a yellow form to speak when that item is called. Item Number 7 is your opportunity to address the City Commission concerning any item that is on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the items or items you're addressing. Items of discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard during this comment section. All citizens completing a yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach a lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The two-and-a-half-minute clock on the monitor above and directly in front of you will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time; you'll be told when your time has expired. Item Number 13 is the public comment form, and it will convene after the adjournment of the business meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue that is not on the business meeting agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach a lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the City Commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of ordinances reads as follows: It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the City Commission, for any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action calculated to disrupt such meeting, order, refuse to obey any ruling of the presiding officer, or such meeting relative to the orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the City Commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. Please silence cell phones and other wireless devices during the meeting. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Henry?
Yeah.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Traeger?
Here.
Commissioner Delgado?
Here.
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Gillan?
Here.
Mayor Derrick O. Henry?
Here.
We have a motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner Traeger.
All those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven, six, zero.
Okay, we'll now move on to item number four, which is the approval of the minutes of the February 20th, 2019 Riverfront Park Workshop, the March 6th, 2019 Food Truck Workshop, the March 30th, 2019 Affordable Housing Workshop, and the April 17th, 2019 Strategic Planning Workshop. Second?
We have a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Traeger. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries six, zero. Now, move on to our agenda. If there are any changes, our city manager will address them at this time.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Going to add an additional Bike Week sponsorship fund contribution to Agenda Item Number 8D, $500 to Bethune-Cookman University for the Black Male Explorers Youth Program from the Bike Week sponsorship funds of Commissioner Paula Reed. Also, we're adding a presentation by the Firefighters Union after the Beautification Award. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries six, zero.
Now move on to item number six, which is our presentations. Item Number Six says the Beautification Awards for June 2019. A member of the Beautification Tree Advisory Board to present.
Good evening. James Newman, 535 Mulberry Street. Mayor Henry, members of the City Commission, and Ms. Goodman. The Beautification and Tree Advisory Board has selected Richard and Ruth Lawrence, 234 Anita Drive, as the Residential Beautification Award winner for the month of June 2019. Richard and Ruth have been residents of Daytona Beach for 11 years. The house was built in 1928. They take pride in doing their own lawn maintenance. The types of trees, shrubs, and plants used for beautification include sunflowers, geraniums, bird-of-paradise, mogunvilla, vinca, and hibiscus. City Commissioner Quanita May, Zone Three, will be presenting the award.
I met you during the presentation. And as I walked the neighborhood, I remember always seeing you outside walking and working and doing that. I appreciate that you spoke for your community.
Honored to be honest.
Mayor Henry, members of the City Commission, and Ms. Goodman. The Beautification Tree Advisory Board has selected Wells Fargo Bank, 130 North Ridgewood Avenue, as the Commercial Beautification Award winner for the month of June 2019. The building is owned by Bruce Sauer, L.A. Sauer Center LLC, named after his deceased father, Louis. Mr. Sauer has been owner and manager for six years. The bank has been in this location since 1964 and was Wachovia then First Union prior to Wells Fargo. The bank was formerly located on Beach Street, is the oldest bank building in Daytona Beach, and the first to have five drive-thru lanes. They say Abraham Lincoln banked at this branch. The types of trees, shrubs, and plants used for beautification include Washingtonia palms, hibiscus bushes, Indian hawthorn, shufflera, cabbage palm trees, and ligustrum bushes. Mayor Henry will be presenting the award.
Maybe Matthias Day. Thank you, Wells Fargo, and thank you for being such a good corporate partner with us here in Daytona Beach, as well as taking excellent care of your property. This certificate of achievement reads, "May it be known that this certificate has been presented to Wells Fargo Bank for distinguished achievement in commercial beautification. City of Daytona Beach, Florida." Signed by Derrick Henry, Mayor, and Commissioner Quanita May.
Okay, we're going to move on to our next item, which is a presentation by the Firefighters That was added to the agenda tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
City Commissioners, Ms. Goodman. So, I don't know if you all heard or if you knew about it. Hopefully, you didn't know about it because it went so smoothly. But June 10th through June 14th, we had Florida professional firefighters in town. And, second time we hosted the event. We hosted it back in 2013, and then again this year. And it was a success. Everybody loved it. It was, they loved the city, they loved the way it's laid out, and everybody couldn't say enough good about Daytona Beach. But with that said, they also couldn't say enough good about Paula Reed, Commissioner Paula Reed. So, she was our guest speaker on June 13th, and she was on fire, to say the least. If she had have played a song, that would have been the one that would have been. Or, in baseball terms, she knocked it out of the park. So, we, Daytona Beach Professional Firefighters, obviously, you know me, Adam. And for y'all that don't, this is Corey Hazen. He's one of our shift representatives. He was our convention chairman person that handled everything, and he did 99.99% of the workload. I was just the pretty face, so to speak. Not really. Inner sarcasm. Anyway, we'd like to present you with a word, you know, a plaque that says, "We appreciate you very much." If you'll come down and accept that, we would be so honored.
Thank you.
I had threatened to play the song before I started. This girl is on fire! And I forgot to play it.
That would have really been cool.
Ms. Paula Reed, thank you for supporting your Daytona Beach Professional Firefighters as the guest speaker for the 75th Annual Florida Professional Firefighters Convention. Thank you so very much.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
Okay, moving on to item number seven, which is the citizen comments. During this time, citizens have the opportunity to address the City Commission on any item that is on the consent agenda. My first speaker tonight is Mr. James Hunt, speaking on Item 8E, and on deck is John Nicholson.
My name is James Hunt. I live in 1190 Herbert Street in Port Orange. I started in Daytona Beach at two years old in 1945 at 326 North Beach Street, where Brown &amp; Brown headquarters being built. Riverside Park was my playground. City Island was my playground. I tried to catch and caught some home runs over Jack's left field. We are responsible for Lighthouse Point Park down at Pond Senlet. My picture's on that. And the reason I mention that is that Lighthouse Point Park, Lighthouse and so forth, is an icon for Volusia County and central Florida. I think so is City Island. It's iconic, it's iconic to Daytona Beach, Florida, and it's iconic to Volusia County. It's a quality of life issue for all of Volusia County, not just Daytona Beach. My job, excuse me, my job is to convince you to not lift the deed restrictions on City Island. My job is to stir up...
Sir, this item is not about that.
Riverfront?
Okay.
Park?
Not about the deed restrictions, though.
Okay.
It's not about the deed restrictions. It has nothing to do with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me revise my comments a minute. Another time for that.
Yes.
Okay. What I've noticed, I was at the meeting where you approved the lease with Mr. Brown, is parking wasn't mentioned whatsoever in the 32-page lease. Parking hasn't been mentioned tonight or any time. City Island, when you look at the renderings, is huge compared to Riverfront Park. It's like that whole issue's being not even mentioned, especially from a parking for the Riverfront Park. But my contention is that what's going on with City Island Park, we're here to save it for what it is: no condos, no commercial, no office buildings, no new government buildings as a part of Riverfront Park.
Again, that's not what the item's about.
It all just, it's on the renderings. City Island, the render...
Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, speaking on Item 8C and 8E.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. Item C, the roof. Some of you recall, I think we've replaced a Peabody roof four, maybe five times. It constantly leaks. I think there's 27 different sections of the roof. I'm asking, I don't care what the cost is, but when we do this roof, that we do it right. There was a problem with a slope or whatever it is. Whatever it takes, I don't care if we have to go out to somebody and cost a little extra, do it right the first time, because you just end up losing in the long run if you don't. So, I'm asking you, we still haven't fixed the Peabody roof correctly, and that needs to be done at some point in the future. But this one, put whatever it takes, to put the slope in, put whatever is really required. Secondly, on the park, I don't have a problem with the park, but I do have a question, and I'm asking you guys to kind of push. We redid the Breakers Park, this splash pad, and for some reason, it was demanded that all the mechanical be put above ground and fenced in, which to me is ugly when you walk into a park to see a fence. We did that with First Step Shelter. We put all the garbage right at the entrance, right there in a fence. The county just recently redid Sunsplash Park and took all of their garbage, all the mechanics, and put in a fence right there at the entrance. When you get out of your car, you hit this long fence. So, the rendering looks nice. What they're asking to do there looks nice, but please, put that garbage, the mechanics, at a site underground where it really doesn't diminish the quality of the park. If you go to Sunsplash, if you go to Breakers, you know exactly what I mean when they put all that garbage right there in the top. It's very large, and it's put in a very utilitarian fence that really does not do anything for a park. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That was my final speaker for the consent agenda.
All right. Take a motion from Commissioner Gilliland and a second from Commissioner Reed. No further questions or comments. All those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are in opposition, same sign. Motion carries seven, zero. All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate you.
Okay. Going to move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item Number Nine A is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Land Development Code text amendment, amend Article 5, mobile food vending. This is an ordinance on second-reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the land development code, amending Article 5, Section 5.4, temporary uses and structures, to allow for mobile food vending as a temporary use, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing an effective date.
Have a motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner Reed.
I do have a speaker, Mr. Mayor, Mr. John Nicholson.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. I sort of kind of almost maybe a little bit understood Bob when he talked about where we were going to be putting the food trucks or whether they would be permitted. At one point, it was not going to be permitted on Main Street. We have 13 restaurants there, three of which don't have kitchens and don't serve food. You have to have a liquor license to serve liquor, and there are in two categories, a four COP and a restaurant license, and that's RX. We're allowing, because we don't enforce our own code, people to save literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in getting a license. The food trucks, again, could screw up what little bit of code enforcement we do have on Main Street. I'm asking that you be very careful where they're allowed and enforce it, because if we don't enforce, we have 13 restaurants, for God's sake. That street could be hopping year-round, but through lack of enforcement, it's not. And I don't want you to screw up any of these restaurants, because we don't have that many. We only have like 100 or so in the Main Street CRA. So, let's not damage what we already have, what little bit we've got. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was my only speaker on this item.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We have any other comments or questions? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six, zero.
Moving on to item number nine B, which is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division Code of Ordnances text amendment. Ordinance on second-reading public hearing. An ordinance amending the City Code of ordinances, creating Chapter 103, mobile food vendors, establishing regulations and licensing requirements for mobile food vending, providing for regulations, providing a sunset date, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
A motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Gilliland.
I do have speakers, Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is John Forgone, and on deck is Lisa Saros.
John Forgione, 651 North Beach Street, Daytona. I'm the owner of Five Star Petty Cab, where the bicycle taxis you see on the boardwalk. We have food trucks, and I operate in 14 cities. All the cities I operate in, except for Daytona, you see food trucks. I think it's a great thing, because, I mean, I petty cab myself. You can't see it from the belly, because I work in an office lot. But when I'm out there riding, Joe's Crab Shack's always on an hour-and-a-half wait. Snowbirds is hardly ever open. Half the restaurants on Main Street are hardly ever open. Peanut Georges closes at 8 o'clock. I mean, so we get people all the time that are always asking about, "Where can we go to eat? Where can we go to eat?" And unless we want to send them up to Ormond, or we want to send them down to the shores, it's, or they want to go way back over to Daytona One, there's nothing like in direct beachside for a lot of choices. So, with food trucks, it kind of gives them more of an option. The other thing I want to ask about is, we operate ice cream bikes and coffee bikes in St. Augustine, Key West, Myrtle Beach, Virginia Beach, and I want to see if those would be allowed in the ordinance. They are licensed by the state of Florida. They have hot and cold water sinks, refrigeration units, and stuff like that. So, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lisa Saros.
Hello, my name is Lisa Saros, and I live at, all right, 203 North Atlantic Avenue, Daytona Beach. First of all, the Joyland is open from 9:00 a.m. till midnight, okay, every single day, even during the off-season, just so if you're looking for someplace to eat. First of all, I want to thank you all for listening to the concerns of all the businesses. For decades, the boardwalk merchants, the Hilton, Ocean Walk, the Pier, along with the city, has worked together to make the boardwalk a destination. It started with one Fourth of July fireworks display going on for over 50 years. It's now tribute bands on Friday and Saturday nights, along with a fireworks show every Saturday night. My brother Dino works hard to help this effort. It is very successful. Vacationers actually plan their trips around the bands that are playing at our band shell. If nothing else, I'd like to suggest a change to the ordinance to not allow food trucks on our parks that are on the oceanfront. We work too hard together to have a truck roll in and take our customers. I think it'd be wrong. We have two parks surrounding the boardwalk. It's Oceanfront Park and Breakers Park. I urge you to support the businesses that are working with the city and are here year-round and exclude these two parks from food trucks. Thank you.
That was my final speaker on this item, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner, you have a comment?
I have a question. So, right now, if people wanted to have a food truck, they would be by permit? If it was a festival or something like this, is that how that works now?
I think Dennis is coming up to answer those questions.
Okay.
But I'll let him handle that.
Thanks, Dennis Morozak, planning director. Are you talking specifically if, in the parks, if they wanted to have it? They'd have to get a, through a special event process, they'd have to...
So, right now, food trucks could not.
Could not.
So, that's not an issue.
Without permission, right.
So, it's that particular issue that Ms. Saros just brought up, it doesn't exist. It's already taken care of.
Correct.
Okay, all right. And then I do have another question with regard to the moving concept. So, if we had the petty cab, could they just go anywhere? I mean, they're mobile, so...
Well, I'd have to take a look at the definition of how that would actually fit in, but they still couldn't operate in the locations that they'd be restricted from. So, 250 feet from A1A, from the pavement, all along Atlantic Avenue, Main Street, Seabreeze, Oak Ridge, ISP, so they couldn't operate in those locations. They couldn't operate within 250 feet of single-family residential, and they couldn't operate within 250 feet of licensed eating establishments, so...
So, they couldn't stop and go?
No.
Because, I mean, the bicycle move on, see?
Correct.
Okay, I'm having visions. And then one more question. As this relates to the boardwalk, just for my own peace of mind, how close can food trucks come to the boardwalk itself?
Uh...
The same buffer zone applies to them?
Yes, along Atlantic. Along Atlantic Avenue, you still have that 250 feet.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Those parks are, can you explain a little bit to me now they would have to get a festival permit?
Well, usually, it's a special event permit to allow the food trucks, which we've done before, where we had some of the special events where they were occurring with the food trucks. They'd have to go through that process to be able to have a food truck in there.
And it would be up to who to say yes or no?
Usually, special event permits go through a staff approval for, to be allowed.
Is there a special permit for any...
Yes, they have to apply for a special event permit and be able to go through the process.
Dennis, just real quick, but this doesn't have anything to do with that process. That's somewhere else in the...
Correct. This is not that process.
Item before us, that, this, not temporary outdoor activity, the special event permit is not what we're talking about right now.
We're talking about allowing the food trucks to operate without going through that special event process. And what this, originally, what we were going to be doing was opening it up throughout the city. What we've done since then is kind of restricted it in certain areas to, and that really limits it in the areas where it could operate then.
Sorry, one final question. If I understand correctly, it sunsets in a, just for my own clarification, number one, at any time that an issue arises, could we bring it up before the commission and say, "We need to revisit this"?
Absolutely.
So, at any time we can bring it up, if there's a, okay, fantastic.
Do you have any additional questions or comments from the commission?
I'm most likely going to, as this progresses, probably every two months, I'm most likely going to approach the business people, and I'm going to ask them, "How is this impacting you in the areas for my zone, for Zone Three?", because I'm in a huge tourist area. And I do want them to, there's room for everybody, but I must also take care of the local business, as we all do, the local business community. So, I'll make a point of visiting them, and if they could give me an honest appraisal of what they think, that would be great.
Very well. Thank you.
I feel also like, Ms. May, that we have to protect our local people. We have to watch out for them. We have to make sure that they are not put at a disadvantage with out-of-town or food trucks. But I think we need to watch out for our locals.
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Let me say something. I think we're also not considering the fact that some locals are also food truck vendors. So, we'll be up with them as well.
Well, some are, but I would say that probably the majority will not be local residents.
And I guess we could keep track of that, right? As people apply for permits, that would be a good indicator. Okay, thank you.
And it's probably also a catalyst for some of them to become a brick-and-mortar company once the food trucks took off. If it turned out really great, they may become one of our standing businesses.
Okay.
Hopefully.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six, zero.
Okay, moving on to item number nine C. It is the Development and Administrative Services Planning Division, LPGA Superwash Express III, First Amendment to the LPGA Superwash Express III Plan District Agreement. This is an ordinance on second-reading quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance approving the First Amendment to the LPGA Superwash Express III Plan District Agreement to modify the approved signage for the planned development located on the east side of Clyde Morris Boulevard, south of LPGA Boulevard, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment, repealing... authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the First Amendment, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date. So move.
Let me take a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Gilliland.
And I do have Mark here from Zeb Cohen, if there are any questions.
Okay. Any questions? No questions from Mark? Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Moving on to item number nine D. It is the Development Administrative Services Planning Division, Project Delta West, Small-Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance adopting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment in accordance with section 163.3187 of Florida statutes, amending the future land use map designation of 1.96 plus or minus acres of property on the east side of North Ridgewood Avenue, between West International Speedway Boulevard and Bay Street, from commercial mixed-use to high-intensity mixed-use, amending the future land use element, Neighborhood E, to increase density and establish a floor-area ratio for 5.99 plus or minus acres of property located within the city block bounded by West International Speedway Boulevard, North Ridgewood Avenue, Bay Street, and Palmetto Avenue, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date. So move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Gilliland. Do we have any questions or speakers?
I do have speakers here. Mr. Mayor, I have Mr. Rob Merrill here, on behalf of the applicant.
For the record, Rob Merrill with Cobb Cole, 149 South Ridgewood. I'll be brief. So tonight, we're here with sort of the next chapter of what you guys just did earlier. This is a phenomenal project brought to you by Consolidated Tomoka Land Company, and I want to be here to sort of celebrate it with you. I'm not going to go through the details of it. I think you guys are briefed on the project. You've seen the renderings and such. And I want to thank your staff for spending months with us getting to this point. I want to thank the redevelopment board for their enthusiastic, I think, on-the-record, unanimous recommendation of approval. Same thing with the planning board. So we've gotten a great reception on this project all along, and I think it's an exciting project. Hopefully you guys will join me in thanking Consolidated Tomoka. Scott Bullock's here with me. Got a whole team of folks here with us for any questions you guys might have. But I think you know that Consolidated has sort of stepped out of their comfort zone, both on the beachside and now downtown, which is just phenomenal for all of us. This is a good corporate citizen that's taking some risks and investing in our community, and hopefully you guys will applaud them with me. This is truly, you know, we've had a lot of things in the newspaper and otherwise about what smart growth is. We've talked about that for probably 15 years now. I don't know that we all have a handle on what that means to each of us, but I can tell you that this project defines it. This is the poster child for smart growth, without question. You know, we're coming to you with a mixture of residential for downtown, phenomenal. We're coming to you with grocery store, potentially. We're coming to you with retail and restaurants, things that complement each other and complement downtown in such a way that we can have a pedestrian environment, not people getting in their cars to go for each of these trips. You know, I can go from my office to the grocery store before I go home. People that live down there will be able to go to the grocery store by foot, or go to the restaurants by foot, or go to the offices by foot. So this is, this is all the kind of thing we've been hoping for in this urban downtown, you know, rejuvenating the urban downtown, which is phenomenal. I mean, we've been talking about heads in beds forever. I mean, thank God for Jack and Kelly White, you know, they've done this as best they could on the scale they have, and this is going to the next level with Consolidated Tomoka. So these are all partnerships that are going to really, I think, change downtown for us, and so hopefully you guys will join me in applauding the effort. So any questions? I've got a whole team of folks that can answer them for you.
Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment. That if this is a stepchild and they're revitalizing downtown, to tell them to come to Midtown, that I'll be, no, this is the, what do you call this, the?
The godchild, maybe what did I call it?
That will be the stepchild. Y'all come down to Midtown, and let's revitalize that area as well.
I hear you. I think it's contagious. I really believe it is. Well...
I do have two additional speakers.
You've got two additional speakers? Well, let's hear from those speakers.
I think Jim Cameron's going to yield. I don't know who the other one was.
Okay. Yes, well, we definitely want to hear from...
From Ms. Kelly White.
Ms. Kelly White.
I just, I couldn't raise this when I saw this on the agenda tonight. It's one of those things that I think Rob will...
Well, excuse me, could you state your name and your address for the record?
Thank you for putting me in place. Where do I live? Kelly White, 208 Wall Street, downtown, a lonely resident for a long time. And I wanted to just go on the record for thanking Consolidated for making this jump into downtown and tackling a redevelopment project that I really believe is, is going to be very catalytic. You know, when Jack and I moved back to Daytona and built a loft, there's 18 units there. And there hasn't really been much else built down there, even for decades. And you don't, you need hundreds, you don't need 18. But we always carried around this, I was asking Jack, he's here. We had this like 12 steps for downtown revitalization, and, you know, I know that residential, grocery, park revitalization, all these things were on there. And it seems like within just the last six months to a year, so many of those boxes have been checked. And I, I just, I almost take it for granted that these things are happening now, and it almost brings me to tears because it just seemed for the longest time that it just never would. And I wanted to thank Consolidated for kind of taking the step and obviously support the project. Thanks.
Mr. Cameron, did you want to speak on this item? Okay.
I'll wait my time. The chamber wants to go on the record and support.
Okay. Do we have any other speakers or comments? I think you pretty much said it all. You guys have spent, you know, a great deal of your lives and your time, the two of you, supporting downtown in Daytona Beach. And this is great momentum, and this is a great, great project. I mean, it can't be overstated, the difference that it'll make in the quality of our lives, those of us who work down here, being able to perhaps go to a grocery store, hopefully, and on the way home is very exciting. And having more people living downtown in a beautiful development is, is what the modern world is all about. You know, and we're excited and delighted that this project is coming to fruition. So we have a motion, we have a second. Okay, all those who are in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. Let's do it. Okay, thank you.
Moving on to item number nine E. It's the Development Administrative Services Redevelopment Division, Project Delta West, rezoning planned development, redevelopment. This is an ordinance on second reading, quasi-judicial hearing. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the landsman like code to rezone 5.99 plus or minus acres of property located within the city block bounded by West International Speedway Boulevard, North Ridgewood Avenue, Bay Street, and North Palmetto Avenue from RDD II Downtown Redevelopment Central Business District and RDD III Downtown Redevelopment Commercial to PDRD Plan Development Redevelopment, approving the Project Delta West Plan District Agreement with DB Mainland LLC, providing for the redevelopment of the property as mixed-use commercial, subject to conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the planned district agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of licenses in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
We have a motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner Reed.
I just had Mr. Cameron sign up to speak. I didn't know if you wanted to waive your time as well.
Waive and support.
Yes, sir. All right, we have a motion and a second. No questions?
Yes, I do. Modification to maximum building height. What might that be?
So the existing building height, I think, was 35 feet or something that was relatively modest. And we would like some tall buildings for these apartments, tall as we can get them.
And what would that be, maximum building height?
What's the number, Debbie? Sorry, Ruth, got me off guard on the numbers.
Because, I mean, the pictures show five-story buildings.
Yeah, the pictures show five, but we had a lot more allowed. So the dense, both the density, the FAR and the height were more than what was allowed in the existing redevelopment area.
We're supposed to vote on this and not know what the maximum building height is?
Not at all. I showed you a representative, you know, architectural drawing to show you what could happen. So if you'll read through the PD document, it's very broad. So we're hoping for more. I mean, the hope is that the bigger, the better. So with downtown Daytona Beach, density is not the enemy. Neither is building height. So we're hoping we can get a view of the ocean, if possible.
From the removal of historic trees and specimen trees.
Yeah, I'll let the Zeb Cohen folks...
Now you have about 25 trees listed. Are they all going to be removed?
Yeah, I'll let the Zeb Cohen folks, the architectural, the landscape architect folks talk about that.
And we have an arborist report, et cetera, so if you want to get the details...
Are you going to be coming back to us with building height?
Yeah, that's a good question. So we'll be coming back with building permits and with site plans. This is the zoning piece only. But you're raising a good question because it was in the zoning documents. I'm going to let Bobby address it. He's got some information from the arborist.
And if you can state your name and address for the record, thank you.
Bobby Ball, 300 Interchange Boulevard, Zeb Cohen Associates. I believe the arborist report's in the package for you.
Yes.
And I believe most, if not all, the trees are dead-dying or diseased, and...
Well, they mentioned a bunch of healthy trees. Are they slated for removal?
Yes, ma'am.
Because some of them are historic.
In order to get the type of redevelopment we're looking for, they, we're proposing them all to be removed.
So you're going to more or less, I guess...
Doesn't mean we will remove them all, but right now, we're looking for permission to do so. Because when we get to the site plan level, if we can save some around the perimeters where we have a parking garage and we want to have some buffer, we will. But at this point, we, we don't want to have to design around them.
You don't know the maximum height, and you don't know...
Yeah, so the height, the height is based on FAR. That's the answer to that.
That doesn't tell me anything.
Well, it does. It gives you the mathematics. So what happens, Ruth, is if you have an acre of property, you can put, you can put 10 acres of building. And so however high that can be, it's based on volume, not based on measured height.
I don't know why I'm feeling you're being a little bit evasive.
I'm telling you exactly what it is. I'm sorry I didn't know the number, but it's FAR-based solely.
Well, what generally would this FAR is supposed to be?
Well, you find Florida area ratios is a way of measuring things, and bigger, more urbanized projects like this. So they're saying essentially, you can build a building 10 times as big as the area that you have to build on. So for instance, when you're, when you're in an urban area, the trees would be something that would be in a plaza, not in the middle of a building that you're building 10 stories tall.
Is it going to be treeless?
Didn't say that. So we're not to the site plan level yet. He's, Bobby's got an arborist that's looked at the trees that are out there to figure out which ones are worth working on and which ones aren't. So when we get to the site plan, you'll see it. It'll come back to you.
We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17 out of 25 are healthy.
Yeah, so we come back with those 16, we'll, you'll have a look at them before we get approval. Again, this, this project is not site planned. It's zoning, purely zoning. And yes, we're zoning for bigger and better. Hopefully, that's something that's well-received, even among the people who have made the questions that, you know, asked the questions that you're asking right now.
I just would like to have a little bit more information.
I can't give you any more than what I'm giving you, which is, that's at a zoning level what's being permitted, and it's common. You can ask your staff if that's normal.
Might be common, but I don't like having to vote on something that I don't have the complete information on.
Well, I think FAR is the complete answer. I should have been quicker at getting that to you, but that is the answer. And so if you want your staff to explain more about what that means...
You want to take crack at helping Commissioner Traeger on FAR?
If I may, Mayor and Commissioner, I'm Jim Morris, deputy city manager. Let me speak to a couple of points. The FAR basically is a multiplier. So there's 43,560 square feet in an acre. With FAR at 10, you could have 436,500 square feet of building. The intention, though, of the overall plan amendment, and when you think about downtown Daytona and you hear discussion about success in the commercial sector, it's keyed to rooftops. It can, it can feed the businesses. And when you look at the Brown and Brown facilities coming on, now, they took an old car lot, but when you go there, it's all dirt. It'll be landscaped, and it'll be nice when they're finished. But the Delta West project is a reaction to the urbanization of downtown Daytona Beach. And the intention is, when you look at the workforce Brown and Brown will bring, that it's a balanced thing. It's not just this building. It's the whole downtown. And everything is working together, and that's what the planning exercise is for. When you've heard the answers to, they're not able to tell you the specifics, they don't have the specifics yet. But from a reasonable expectation perspective, I think that to think that most or all the trees may be eliminated is not an unreasonable expectation. But at the other hand, I think that it's also reasonable to think that if you're going to urbanize downtown Daytona and you compare what it was once upon a time to now, it's a much different place. It also is a place that needs redevelopment and more economic energy into the downtown so that it can recover and be a more vibrant and active place. And if you take everything together, start with Riverfront Park and work all the way back to US1, and then all the way out to Fairview, and probably all the way down to Orange, that's the concept that you have to think about, how this piece fits into that broader puzzle. And from a planning staff perspective, and from a management perspective, we think that that is the appropriate way to approach things, to try and have... If you can't have house stuff because you've got single, you have multifamily buildings, it's occupants in the area that can contribute to the way the community works. And the absence of the trees, as sad as that may be in that particular area, is a natural part and parcel of a more urbanized part of the community, which is this city, this downtown Daytona Beach, has been the center of the eastern part of Lushy County as long as I've been alive. And it suffered losses when shopping centers came and other things happened. This is a chance for resurgence. But residential and commercial together, or how we see it from a planning perspective, is a necessary conjunction of those things. And there are some losses of things we'd like to keep that come along with that, but the overall gain is greater, and that's why you have staff support.
This seems a little strange. Mr. Brown is so intent on putting mature trees down in Riverfront Park.
Yes, ma'am.
And here, we're intent on taking out mature trees.
Well, I'm not going to, I don't want to link Mr. Brown to this project because it isn't his.
I know.
It's the overall effort that's being made, but it's showing the balance that's occurring when you look at the broader scope. And the Browns are certainly focused on that in Riverfront Park. At the same token, to build the type of building that are going to accommodate the people that you're going to have that need to live downtown, it's more building than it is trees. And that's the balancing act that we're pursuing.
Well, Mr. Brown was very upfront on telling us it's going to be 10 or 11 stories.
Yes, ma'am, and I don't think it's been hidden here. If you've got a floor-area ratio that is 10 times greater than the area of the property, reasonably expecting a 10- or 11-story building is not out of the question, because you do have setbacks and so on that apply to it. But the point is, it, this is, the question before you is narrow, but its effect in the overall puzzle is much broader. And that's what you're being asked to look at.
They say relief from the maximum height. What might be the maximum height?
Well, I'd have to let them come back and answer, but I think taking 10 or 11, maybe even 12 stories, is not unexpected and not seen necessarily as undesirable. When you look at beachfront properties and the way those have developed, they developed that way for a different reason, but the same thing is that you do have height in downtown Daytona. Rob said he hoped they could, I'm sorry, Rob said he hoped they could see the ocean from there.
What is the height in the downtown area?
Oh, I'm talking about the community at large. Downtown, I'd have to let Dennis answer that question in terms of the maximum. But I think the expectation here is probably reasonably 11 or 12 stories.
Why don't you put that in the...
We're not at that stage yet to put it in the document, and you certainly have...
But you want us to approve this relief for maximum height?
Yes, ma'am. The concepts, if I might go a little further, Mayor.
Well, is it possible to say what the, based on the limits, based on the area of the building, what is the maximum height that they could build this building? Is it 30 stories? Is it 20 stories? The probability is 12 stories, is what they're saying. But the possibility, is the possibility 30 stories. That may affect her vote. She may not be able to support a possibility that it's 30 stories down there.
I suppose anything is possible, improbable, but possible.
Well, based on the dimensions that you're giving us, what's the highest that the building could be built? Do we not know the answer to that question?
I better yield to the advocates for the project on that part.
Yeah, because she wants to know the answer.
Yes, sir.
Other, you know, for some of us, that may not matter as much, but she wants to...
Yeah, so in this type of urban setting, again, Rob Merrill, for the record, you know, FAR is a lot of times the quantitative limitation of size. And height is not always the issue. If there's a height limitation, you want to propose it, Ruth, we could entertain it. But we didn't want to be constrained that way because it's based on what we're bringing in terms of the old, the area that involves volume, not just high, wide, narrow. I mean, it's, it's...
So, so Rob, the answer is, we don't know...
We don't have a building height limitation because we don't want to have a building height. We want to have it be based on FAR, which is, in an urban area, is common.
I'm just kind of wondering why you showed us five-story building.
It's a picture. I mean, that's a picture of what could happen.
And yet it could be a 50-story building.
Could be. Height, you know, and I don't know that they, with the math wouldn't work, I don't think, Ruth, based on the acreage and the setbacks, as Jim was saying, once you put the math in. It depends on what the site plan is that comes forward. We'll show you what a 10 FAR looks like. It's gonna be less than 10. I mean, that's, that's the mathematical reality, but why limited, is my point. Because you asked a question about the trees. So even though Bobby was saying that he wants the opportunity, that's only the, the mechanical or the, or the regulatory opportunity. It still has the requirement for every inch of, of, of tree removed, it's gotta be replaced by two-inch calipers. So it's doubling the trees that are being removed in a place where it's appropriate, whether they make a plaza or some sort of, you know, a frontage along the street or wherever it is, it will be replaced by twice the trees. So I hope that's a good answer for you. Thank you, Jessica. I'd miss that one, too. Details, right?
I don't like being asked to vote on something that is so vague.
And I apologize for that. This is, this is literally hundreds of pages of documents in the last handful of months that we've been working on this. And the detail about.
Well, then you should have all the information right here for it.
Doing my best. I'm picking it out as you, as you throw it at me, Ruth. So you got it now. Is there anything else I can help you with?
No, this is just terribly vague. Like I said, I don't like voting on a pig in, on a pig in a poke.
I, I sure hope it's not characterized that way. I think we called it a godchild earlier.
Mr. Mayor, can I?
Okay. You want to help? Yeah. Rob, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And Ruth, I understand your concern. But, you know, this isn't the, the site plan.
It's not.
That, that's coming before us. What we're doing tonight is kind of the first step in this whole thing. It's the first hurdle in many hurdles of this project. This thing, if you go up by probability, it's not getting built. If you look at the history of Daytona Beach, we get this far and then they can't find anybody who can make the numbers work to build the project. All we're doing tonight is we're giving them the density bonus that they need to be able to go out and market this thing and see if they can find somebody who can make the math work to build it. You know, Rob said, you know, it'd like to be high enough that they could see the ocean. I have no problem if they want to go 25 stories on that piece of property. You know, that isn't a problem for me because that's more people downtown. Our downtown suffers because we don't have enough people down there to visit the shops, visit the restaurants, you know, keep it vibrant. This is a project that has the opportunity to try and remedy that situation. But to try and hamstring them now and try and throw a, even if we threw a 10-story limit on them, you know, that may turn off a bunch of developers that might have been interested at 15. You know, leaving this thing as loose as we can right now, and to me, honestly, this is not loose at all. It's very, very well defined. Floor area ratio is the way we've been doing this forever. And it's a very simple concept, but we're really just putting together a package that Consolidated Mocha can go out and share with folks that might be willing to come in and build this thing. You know, I'm excited about the fact that there's, there's, there's a very good chance there's gonna be some public parking involved with this. That is something that is direly needed downtown.
I'm excited about having a grocery down there, having a parking garage down there, having apartments down there.
Yep.
But I don't like the idea of voting on something that is, like I said, so vague.
Well, then.
They should know their plan.
If you're against the project, because if you, if you want to vote on the site plan before you vote on the, on the density, then I'm a, I don't understand where you're coming from with that. This is the way the projects work.
Each time we've had this, you, you, she, she, she just doesn't like this process.
And I understand your uncomfortableness with.
No, I mean, not this, the process of the way the PD goes.
Going for something 100 stories high, which would be totally inappropriate.
Yeah, I didn't mean to put words in your mouth. I, I was just saying, the way the PD process works.
Yes, I know.
You'd rather it just be.
You did say process, not project. So you heard project and you said process.
Process.
And, and I under, I understand your uncomfortableness with it, but realize 95% of these things that get this far fail because they can't make the math work on the back end. They can't collect enough in rent to be able to afford to cover their construction costs, their soft costs, their engineering, all these people sitting here tonight, the meters run out of all of them. You know, they've gotta be able to connect, collect enough rent to be able to cover that. And I want as many people down there as we can get.
Well.
You know, and I want this to be a project that draws more people to that area and other projects. But, you know, I'm, I'm absolutely comfortable with this and I want it going forward because I want to have the opportunity for somebody to come in and say, that, that's a place where I'm, I'm willing to take on the financial risk to build this thing because I believe that Daytona is really emerging at this point. There will be people who want to pay the rents that I need to get to, to make the project viable. So, you know, let's, let's do this. But we won't know that question unless we put together a, a, a package that Consolidated can go out and market, you know, and find somebody who's willing to come in and take that financial risk.
I would have been a lot more comfortable if they had shown these concept things with a tall building rather than making us think it's gonna be long, broad, uh, story. I, I just don't like kind of, uh, well, I think you understand what I mean.
Question's been called.
Okay. All right. No further comments. And we've had a motion and now we have a call for the vote. All those who are in favor of the project, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign.
Same si, um, aye, because I cannot feel comfortable about.
Yes, ma'am. Motion carries five, one. Let's go out and get this project done.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to our next item. 9F is the Budget Office, City Manager's Office, amending Chapter 46, Article 2, Section 4626 and 4691 of the Code of Ordinances. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance amending Chapter 46, City Code, to amend Article 2, Section 4626, entitled Appropriation of Fund Balance Retained Earnings and Fund Balance Retained Earnings Reserve Levels, and Section 4691 entitled Lapse of Appropriation, to clarify the policy as it relates to the segregated budgetary cash reserves, renewal and replacement funds, and beginning budgetary fund balance for the purpose of the annual fiscal integrity, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date.
Uh, we have a motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner Gilliland. Do we have any speakers?
I have no speakers for this item, Mr. Mayor.
No speakers. Do we have any questions or comments from the commission? All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries six, zero.
Okay. Moving on to item number 10A is administrative items. Item 10A is the Budget Division, Second Quarter Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Budget Amendment Resolution. A resolution amending the fiscal year 2018-19 budget to increase revenues, operating expenditures, and transfers in capital expenditures, and providing an effective date.
Don't move.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Gilliland.
I have no speakers for this item.
Okay. Um, do we have any questions from the commission? All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six, zero. All right. We'll move on to comments and inquiries from the commission. We'll start tonight with Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Peter. I'd love to recognize that there was a conference from the Florida Professional Fire Department that's already done. I want to also say this is one of the best Juneteenth celebrations I've seen.
It was really awesome.
It was really, really awesome. The banquet was nice. Of course, hosted at Emerald Aeronautical University. And the festival, though, they had over 75 genders, lots of activities for the children, activities on the stage. It was really, really well done. I commend that committee, uh, for doing that. And then also there was a new event that came through the city called the Emerald Ball that was hosted by Brittany Preston, the young lady that we had to host our seafood festival. And I'd like to say Amir was one of 44 men that were recognized, like men that were recognized in our community for the outstanding contributions to our community and what they do to serve others. And I commend you on receiving that recognition, sir. Uh, I know that there's going to be a meeting soon in regards to the redevelopment and a new look for MMB from MLK to Ridgewood, I believe, right there. So we'll have those dates announced to the community so that we can be there and share with them what that new look is gonna be like and to get their input in regards to that as well. That concludes my comments.
Yeah, excellent. Commissioner Traeger?
I think I said enough. Thank you.
No, you have.
But I, I said Juneteenth. They had, um, three, um, community heroes or hometown heroes recognized. Two of them were 100 years old and one was 99. God bless them.
Amen. That was nice. Sir?
Thank you. Uh, two things I want to talk about tonight. First was the, is the rec center. We got in our, recently some of the, the data in on the various costs. And I, I received an email from, I think we all probably got an email from Ann Ruby, and she raised some really good points about the, the changes in the data from the last time we looked at this. So I don't know when is, if that's gonna come up, when that comes up before us, but, um, Mr. Chism is not here tonight, but I, I'd like to get a little bit more information on why there's been a, I mean, it may not be economically feasible, whether it's 200,000 or 700,000, but there was a radical change of some of the numbers. And I think we, we need to look into that, make sure that, um, you know, we're comparing apples to apples here before we go forward with that. Again, it may not ultimately matter. I mean, it may be cost prohibitive, whether it's, you know, the original numbers or the new numbers, but I still think there's a big enough change in a short period of time that we need to make sure we understand that before we, we commit to a force of action there. The other thing I wanted to bring up, Mr. Mayor, was the First Step Shelter. And I know I have a meeting with Mr. Chism today and he's not here today, so a lot of that, a lot of our conversation, I just have to take my word for it. But a couple of things I wanted to bring up is that we're getting towards the point where we, this program will need to be open and up and running. And I was thinking a lot about the conversations we've had. I've watched on the First Step Shelter meetings. And I, I wanted to put before the commission an idea of maybe we can help out the First Step Shelter a little bit with implementing some policies or suggesting some policies to them. The two things I wanted to focus on, at least tonight, because they do involve our budget, is security and kind of the admissions policy. And I was thinking along the lines of what we've done in the past, kind of having a limited approach to it. So what I thought was, and I wanted to see what the other committee, one of the commission members think of this, is that, first of all, I know Chief Capri has agreed to have a lieutenant available at the First Step Shelter and to provide security, at least initially, for the first 90 days. So I think that's an item that we could probably take on as the city and tell the First Step Shelter Board, you guys don't have to worry about programming that part of it. We, you know, we can offer that. And then the second thing would be the admissions policy. I think the admissions policy is really important, especially in those first 90 days because that freshman class, so to speak, is gonna really, um, help determine the success and the buy-in of the community. And I think it's really important that the first couple of months run smoothly because there's been so much delay. There's gonna be a lot of pressure on us, a lot of pressure on the program. So I thought that, as it is right now, law enforcement knows the people that are gonna probably be best served. If we only had 50 beds to fill, I think law enforcement in the Volusia County area knows who those people are. So we already have outreach teams. And I would think that my recommendation to the Shelter Committee would be to say that for the first 90 days, admission be by referral from law enforcement, either through going to the, going to law enforcement offices or through the homeless outreach team or through arrests. And have that be the initial 90-day intake process. And then we can revisit that and open it up after 90 days. But I thought if we could kind of set that as the, as the goal from the city or the recommendation from the city for the board to accept, we would take some weight off their shoulders as far as programming it. And we'd also ensure the success of a program that we've sunk so much money into. Because I, I do think who occupies that shelter is an important consideration, given the amount of money that we've donated and the amount of money that we've invested. We want to make sure that it's not taken by people who are out of the area, who come down just for that purpose, say from Flagler County. And I know people think that may be a far-fetched idea, but I look at the mobility of the panhandlers and how quickly they were able to relocate from one area to another and then dissipate so quickly. And I think there is, um, there is some awareness of where there's opportunities. And there is some awareness of where there may be, you know, safe places to go. So I think that that would be a good, a good thing for us to talk about. So my, my hope would be the commission feels comfortable maybe giving a direction to the First Step Shelter, saying, hey, you know, we'll, we'll kind of give you these things or we'll kind of do these things for you or cover these things. And then at least that would take a couple of items off their plate to worry about, let them focus on fundraising and programming with Catholic charities. The other.
Wait, 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 before you go. So the manager is saying that he would, they would be agreeable to having a lieutenant be a part of the First Step Shelter Board for 90 days?
No, not the board. It's chief.
Not the board, I mean, as a part of the facility for 90 days and that person would be there for eight hours for a shift?
I, I, I don't.
Because I don't know if that was, you know, you know, I've met with Catholic charities today and they had a conversation with Chief Capri and that was his desire. But no one has said to me that that was what they would do. And the second thing is, it doesn't eliminate the need for security because that person is there for a shift. But I do want to know if that's inaccurate. That's just his desire because I know the manager in here. Your conversation with him was that, what was, what you understood?
I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but my understanding was that, speaking with the manager, that that was something that we, that was something that we could do. And that Chief Capri was talking about having someone there 24/7.
Yeah. He wants to do that. Okay. So that, that would be helpful. But your second point of observation is that they would, the intake policy.
Right.
One thing we have to be careful of is that we, the First Step has to determine what the intake policy is. We can make suggestions. And so our suggestion is, because I want to be clear of what, what we're communicating back to them.
Sure.
You know, the suggestion is that they would, uh, have an intake policy that allows the police to bring the people to us because of your fear that they're gonna come from outside of the community, essentially.
Right. My, my concern is, especially in that first entry, first group of people, we want to make sure that we really put the system through its paces and turn out a good first group of participants. And I think the police are already in contact with people on a daily basis and will know who they are and can ensure that we get people from the contributing areas. Now, I think that's an important part of the buy-in process. And when we've donated, we, we've invested so much money. I want to make sure that Daytona Beach has beds and spaces available. And, you know, there's not a, you know, a move, a influx of people from out of the area or some, you know, a city bring a bus load of people, 15, 20 people come from another area and are dropped off there and all of a sudden there's a disproportionate thing. And, and so that's why I was thinking it would be good if we said as a city, hey, you know, our recommendation, our hope, our direction, whatever, is that at least for the first 90 days, consider a more narrowly tailored admission policy than what had been floated previously, which is, you know, come one, come all.
That's, that, that's really not, we're, they're past that. They're beyond that. And they, they've accepted the reality that you don't want to bring people from other communities and you're gonna limit it to essentially, uh, the areas in, that were, that, the, the cities that occupy the board, uh, consist of, as well as, you know, unincorporated Volusia. So.
So I thought.
We definitely want to, yeah, and then, and I think it's not a bad idea. I don't, I think we could say that you could pre-register people. I don't think that's a bad idea. But I, you know, and, and, but I think we have to be very careful to make certain that we're not, because we, we've contracted with Catholic charities. That's who we want to run it and we've given the First Step Board. We've got to give them the ability and not pass too many things that might appear to be edicts from us. So we want to make sure that, you know, we can, certainly by all means make suggestions. And I, I think that making, allowing law enforcement to help with Catholic charities to pre-register people would actually be an ideal solution to what you're suggesting because then we wouldn't have to worry about who was coming. So if we already know 35 people that, that, that would want to, and come to the facility for graduation, uh, work towards getting out of homelessness, um, why not work with them to do that? Does that would, does, would, do you think that would meet your, what you're suggesting?
Yeah, absolutely. We can identify a group of people that are gonna be a successful first group of people to take through the program and put it through its paces. So we see where things are gonna be, you know, points of friction in the system. There's gonna be kinks to be ironed out in any system. But I think that that would be a, I think law enforcement are ideally situated to do that. And whether it's, uh, pre-screening or whatever the case may be, um, you know, I, I think we also need to start now, kind of help. If that's something they want, I think we should start doing that sooner rather than later because I think, um, you know, I, I think it'll be on us quicker than we think. And I think the demand will be greater than people, people think. I, I really do. I think.
I, I think you might be right about that.
There's just nothing like it until you get to Pinellas. So I, I want to kind of plan for success, but all, and have a contingency if things fall apart. Because as we've talked about in prior meetings, if, if things do fall apart, it'll be us that are left holding the bag financially. We. the bag financially. We have the, we're the largest stakeholder. So, you know, and we've talked before about having kind of contingent plans. It looks like we've moved past them, thankfully. But I, I do think, you know, if, if the rest of the commission feels like that, I, I think we should kind of offer the help of our, of our law enforcement officers to kind of identify or, or come up with a group of likely candidates or whatever, so that we know, hey, we're going to have at least this many people that are going to be a strong chance of succeeding, that represent the, you know, the financial contributors in a balanced and proportional way. It just wouldn't be fair for, you know, a city that hasn't bought in to have a, you know, a lion's share of the beds.
Well, they shouldn't have any, any of them if they're not willing to be committed to being a part of the process. But I think we have to be very careful to make certain that we leave room for the other stakeholders, who are the people who are in the community and who inhabit the ground and who work with homeless people, who are not necessarily law enforcement.
Right.
And so you have to have a mixture of both. And those people, you know, many people who've been deeply committed to this process, they work with people who are homeless. They talk to them, they, they feed them, they do things, and they, they want to have the capacity and the ability to be sure that they can bring people to the shelter as well.
And, and so where that, what I was thinking, I, I agree with you 100%. And to do that effectively and safely, we have to know who we have. And that's why I went out, when I went out to jail, it's, the whole part of the jail is designed to figure out, who are you? What is your history? How are you going to play nicely with others? And how do we house you? And that's a really expensive, time-consuming process. So the people who can best do that are the police. So I, I agree, if there's a, a community outreach group that says, okay, we want to help this person, all I'm saying is, maybe we should say, okay, for the first 90 days, bring them to the police station, they'll do their background check, figure out who they are. And that shouldn't be a long process, a five, 10-minute, 15-minute process at most, if you have the equipment to do it, and you're hooked into the right databases. And then they can be taken out to the, the facility.
But if you're going to have a lieutenant there, why can't they just bring them to the shelter?
I, I don't know. They have a wireless or something, a rapid ID system to fingerprint you, but I think there's a more robust system, right, that you need to be, I mean, can you help us out on that?
I'll, I'll do my best. Jakari Young, Deputy Chief of Police for the City of Daytona Beach. So let me go ahead and throw out this disclaimer on the front end, that I am not privy to all the conversations in reference to this that have been discussed between Chief Capri and Mr. Chisholm. But what was explained to me, we were discussing having a full-time lieutenant assigned to the shelter under the jail diversion program. That is what is set up out in Pinellas. They refer to it as a jail diversion program. So when we encounter homeless individuals and we pick them up on low-level offenses such as the open container, sleeping in public parks, they have an option of being able to go out there and be a part of the jail diversion program versus going to the Volusia County branch jail. That was the way it was explained to me, and we were assigning a full-time lieutenant out there to be in charge of the jail diversion program and oversee the civilian security company that's going to be out there. But yes, we do have fingerprint readers, and we would have computers and the technology set up out there to where we could run those, those background screeners before they are admitted into the facility. That is the gist of what it was, what was explained to me as of, up, up until this point.
And that, that's fine. And I will say that I think from first step shelters' perspective, that the desire has been to be able to meet both interests in the community, which is to serve as a jail diversion program. But the majority of the people on that board and the majority of the people in the community desire that it be something that is just expressed as a, as a compassionate, humane approach to addressing this issue, and that it not be just driven by law enforcement.
Right.
And so the objective is to find a way to balance both of these, bring both of them into, to being in this shelter. And I think that what is being offered and suggested by Chief Capri would certainly enable us to be able to meet that objective, because you have law enforcement there, you have them bringing folks in under the auspices of a, sort of a diversionary program, and then you still have the capacity to bring people in through other channels and still be able to do the checks.
Right.
That warrants us being a safe facility.
I mean, you know, you know, you know what my day job is, trust me. I, I, I'm all for personal rights and liberties and all that, and I'm not suggesting this, this is a prosecutorial-oriented model. All I'm saying is, I think the police are the cheapest, best solution to ID who you have and get them safely out there in the beginning. That's, that's all I'm...
I don't know about cheapest, but I'll take best.
Well, they've got the equipment for it right away. We don't have to buy anything more. Like, if you go out to the jail, there's data, there's a whole computer and a whole system dedicated to identifying who a person is. And there's two different databases they have to run through, so the police can do that with a little fingerprint reader like that. So that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah. But we wouldn't be able to do that anyway without law enforcement.
Right.
There's certain things that you just couldn't, couldn't do anyway.
Right. And then the other, last thing I would say is that there was some discussion about, I just want to bring this out for everyone to hear it, I don't know if they already heard it or not, but that there's going to be ample space outside the shelter for people to wait and, you know, get in a condition to be admitted. And, and if there's a waiting list, thank you, Chief Young, Deputy Chief of Police.
Yes, thank you.
If there's a waiting, you know, three-day wait or four-day wait, that they could even wait there until a room of space opened, then I think that's a great addition. I, I'm really glad that that was something that was being put into place, because, you know, come as you are doesn't mean we have to let you in how you are. But, you know, having a place where people can get hydrated, can get rested, can get out of the elements for a little bit before they, they go into the program is an excellent thing, and it, I'm really glad that we put it into place. So I applaud the people that did that, and I think it was very forward-thinking of y'all. So that's really all the comments I have. I appreciate everyone's time.
Okay. Thank you very much, and those are, that's a great conversation and discussion. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Mayor?
I always go after you. So, we're sort of along the same lines. I recognize that we have two women that we have made appointments on the board, so I appreciate that. Are they voting members? Is this correct?
They're not, no.
No.
They're not board members?
They're not board, oh, so they have no, they don't have voting power, they're just...
Those, those, those women are serving as the sort of interim executive director, so they have a lot of influence over the board.
But no voting power?
No, no.
No voting power, okay.
No, they're the legs.
All right. Well, I appreciate the fact that they volunteered. And can we say their names? Are we allowed to say their names?
Yeah.
Okay, fantastic. Ms. Leslie Bonner and Ms. Janie Lee Sploom. I appreciate the fact they stepped forward. And I believe that there are most likely some other women in the community and people in the community in general who would be quite happy to volunteer. I've spoken to people, that they're quite happy to lend a hand as needed. That's number one. Number two is, as we move forward, September is approaching, and I believe we have another program in place called Soldier On. I'm wondering where we are with that right now, because if we have a three-month window and people are ready to kind of exit out, we've got to think of housing situations. So are we moving forward on that? I don't know. I'm curious. Good evening.
Dr. L. Ronald Durham, Community Relations Manager, City of Daytona Beach. Commissioner, I spoke with Mr. Hagmeyer in Massachusetts this morning, and Soldier On is in the process of identifying developers who have experience in particularly low-income housing tax credits. And so they're trying to find a suitable partner to partner with them on development of this particular project. All systems are still go, and as they move forward, they will keep us up to date on that progress.
And I know it's really hard to give us timeframes, but any ideas to roughly how they move forward next? Just a wait-and-see kind of thing, as with any development? Are we saying that we have a goal that by 2020 or 2021? I'm just curious.
No, we don't have a hard fixed date goal.
Okay.
There are some other things that they have to develop as far as site plans and, and other things that they have to present to us before we even get to a place that we can say yes or no to the project.
Fantastic.
So there's still a lot to be developed as we move forward, but there is no specific date.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I just appreciate the fact that we're, we're still moving forward.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Then, in conjunction with that, there's another form of housing called infill housing, and I keep bringing this up because we have so many empty lots. And I will continue to ask that we try to pay attention to those lots and that we try to develop some housing for those particular areas. This week I visited Steewood Marchman, and they have some interesting programs. I would very much like for them, if possible, to do a presentation, maybe a five or six-minute presentation one day. They have two programs called #ZeroSuicide and also a program called Mental Health First Aid. One is a two-hour program and one is an eight-hour program. And it's a community program designed to help the community recognize neighbors or business people who are experiencing crisis and where to direct them. But it's a free program to the community. So if there's anybody out there, any group, they'll take as few as five people, as many as 30 people, and they will come to you. They have this program, one program for three more years and one program for two more years. So they're really looking for opportunities. And right now, New Smyrna Beach is doing a lot of it. And so I'd very much like for us to have some people in the audience possibly listening, you know, reach out to SMA, and they're happy to work with us. But if they could do a presentation, I think that would be fantastic in the future. Also, Ridgewood, as we start working on the downtown area, Ridgewood becomes an important corridor for us. And I'd like to know if we could maybe consider doing some beautification, some, something, propose a plan of some sort, but start to focus on how we can improve that Ridgewood corridor as best we can. And I do believe that that is it. Thank you so much. Oh, one more thing. The waterfront. The waterfront is important to us. So for example, Riverfront Park is going to be fantastic. I visited the marina this week, very nice area, extremely underutilized. If, if anybody out there likes to do activities, please reach out to us, because I think it would be nice to do some events out at that park. I thought about the seafood festival, doing it actually at the marina. Anything like that, just to help bring some activity and life to that environment would be great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on, I really had a question for Dr. Durham as well, but Commissioner May kept going, so I didn't get a chance to jump in. That's all right. I didn't want to interrupt you. But Dr. Durham, is the, the land on the corner of Orange Avenue, Gene, and Caroline still the only property we're considering for Soldier One?
Commissioner, at this point, that was the only property that we showed to them, that they actually toured and were very pleased with. We did not have a secondary property in mind at this point.
No, I just wanted to know, was that still the only one?
Yes, ma'am.
That's in my zone.
Yes, that's, yes, that's the one.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll do it.
Yes, sir.
Well, I was going to answer Erin's question about the difference between the, that laughable renovation quote that we had for, for the rec center versus the real quote that we have now, that we have actual engineers going through and looking at it. And, you know, and when we talked about it earlier, I actually had a quick conversation with one of the staff in the hallway afterwards. And, you know, that, that 760 number, that only gets it back to where it is. That doesn't get it up to code. The million-dollar, million-one number is actually what gets it up to code, which, if we're going to do this, I mean, we're, I mean, that's what we're looking at, at, at having to, to shoulder, you know, with help from others. I'll probably repeat that when Erin gets back. But, but there was no way. I, I renovated townhomes and up in Alexandria, Virginia, when I was in college. And even back then, I mean, there was a, a very simple rule. It costs three times more to renovate than it does to build new, when you're looking at a true renovation of historic property. In this case, it's just a big open room, you know, so it's a little different in the math side, but, you know, it is, it's, it's just going to be a challenging property, no matter how we size it up. With that said, and Betty, I guess I'm going to put this one out there for you to help with. I'm still seeing a lot of houses, you know, around town, mostly houses, a few other, you know, non-residential structures that for six months have had the condemnation stickers on them, and they're still there. And I know there's some on Ridgewood, there's one over on Wild Olive, there's a couple other around town. At one point, we got a list of all the properties that had been condemned and sort of with the status of where they were. And it'd be nice, I think, at this point, I think it's been probably six months since we had that. Bobby, probably have to help with this, you know, to get kind of an update as to where we are with those, with those properties. Because some of these, in my mind, should have been brought down a long time.
Can get you a date?
Okay. Erin, you're actually, I had to step out there for a minute, but the, we actually, at the end of the strategic planning earlier today, talked about the, the rec center and the bid, and that's the real bid. That, that number that, that somebody came up with before, I don't know where it came from, but, you know, if I remember correctly, I think it was only like 160,000 or 180,000, it was something obscenely low. I mean, which is why I had my tantrum at the meeting, you know, six months ago, and said, we need to hire somebody to come in and give us a legitimate estimate as to what this is going to cost. That number, that million-one number, that's to bring it back and bring it up to code.
Okay.
That's the number. You know, I don't know where that other number, number came from. I don't know if it was, you know, there, there wasn't really a scope of work associated with it. This one is very clear with what's included, what's not. You know, I don't have any interest in kind of changing the appearance. It is a historic structure. One, I think that million-four number is actually to move the entrance to the, the north, the north face. I mean, I think we need to leave it, if we're going to, if it's going to be saved, it needs to be saved in, in its original condition as much as possible, you know, with the, the entrance facing west. But, you know, it is going to be a big challenge to figure out where that money might come from. And I think what we all agreed to earlier was to have staff start looking at all the different grant opportunities that are out there, whether it's Echo Racing Rec, having the, the veterans themselves go out, reach out to perhaps Representative Walts, and, you know, see if there's anything from the Fed level that, that might be available to them. But there's a lot that, there's a lot of opportunity out there, but we're not in any hurry, because it's really not going to get any worse at this point. It's, we'd be ashamed to see it go, but we've got to figure out how to pay for it. And lastly, what was the last one? Oh, Space Square. So the Home Depot Shopping Center, I think everybody's probably seen the article about the possibility of that becoming kind of an R&amp;D center for, you know, small to medium-sized aerospace or space-related companies. I'm going to actually meet with some of those guys next week. Turns out their local guy is, is a lot, golfing buddy of mine. So, I have a lot of golfing buddies somehow, some way or another. I haven't played golf with this guy in 10 years, but he still, still has my number in his phone. But I'm going to go out and meet with them. And one of the things, I mean, it would be just a tremendous opportunity for Daytona Beach to get those kinds of jobs located here. And, you know, the only thing that, you know, I, I explained to them that we don't do seed money, we don't, you know, there isn't a lot that we can do. Our only real economic development tool are tax abatements. And Bob, we did this with Teladine, their research and development center on Williamson, where they don't own the building, they're, they're a tenant, the Fisher family owns the, the property and the building. So we were able to find a way to be in compliance with our requirements, restrictions on offering tax abatements, but in this case, allow it to, to a tenant. So as we move forward with this, and this is just preemptive on my part, you know, that is, this is absolutely the kind of thing that that tax abatement was put into place for. You know, we've done it for some companies that were kind of, you know, where the jobs really were just a tiny bit above our average wage. We're talking about the jobs that are going to be two or three times our average wage. So I think that this is one where we really going to need to, to, you know, do everything we can to help encourage them and make it work for them financially. And, you know, just as we move forward, since we know it's going to be tenant space, I think there's, with the Teladine project, if you remember, there was, the requirement was, you know, that that, that abatement was passed through, through a rental abatement to the tenant. So, but if you wouldn't mind taking a look into that and figuring out how we structured that one and how we might be able to...
That's all done through the state ship program?
This is through our local tax abatement. So, abating, city of Daytona Beach, property taxes.
I'll, I'll take a look at the model.
So, and that was, that, I guess, the only one I can think of where it wasn't an owner-occupied, you know, building, was the Teladine Research and Development Center on Williamson.
Oh, he's not thinking of buying that building, he's just thinking of...
He's going to buy it, but then he's going to lease out parts, sections of it to the comp, to the high-tech company.
So we would then pass it to the high-tech companies that come in, not to him?
So, so if, so what would happen is, he would get, you know, if he got a thousand bucks knocked off, you know, $12,000 knocked off his tax bill, that he would pass through a $1,000 a month tax abatement to his tenant.
Yeah, okay.
You know, in this case, there'll be multiple tenants.
And, I'm sorry, is he planning on, is it a local hire thing? Are they coming from out of state? How does this work?
These will, these will be, these will not be Daytona Beach companies. These are, these are people that are looking to get into the privatization of space travel.
And so they're bringing their own employees probably from wherever they are?
Cameron wants to say something, because he's, actually, the chamber is a big supporter of this, and I haven't had a chance to meet with Jim about it, but...
Go ahead. I'm curious.
The, Mr. Mayor, that would be at your discretion, but if Jim actually does know a little more about the...
You want him to take up your time?
This is all I've got to say, so... This is all I've got to say, so if you got, if you have something short, you can tell us about the companies that might come in.
Yeah, I'm Jim Cameron, Senior Vice President, Government Relations, Daytona Regional Chamber. And this Space Square, this is a gentleman named Chad Hagel out of Los Angeles, but he's also got connections. His mom lives in New Smyrna Beach, and he's looking to, forward to coming back here with this project and very much...
Just focus on the types of businesses that will be located in the...
This is going to be aerospace-related type businesses, though, that are going to be moving in here. And like Rob said, I mean, more than likely, there will be companies outside of this area here, looking to bring in new companies, though, but hopefully will be employee local.
And so we're looking at maybe Emory Riddle, students might stay, hopefully, for all the universities...
It's going to be like, I would think engineer-type jobs and such, I mean, just the high-tech type jobs, but hopefully local, though. So it's going to be repurposing this complex, though, and also, that's why we're very much excited for it, though.
All right, thank you.
There's a lot of opportunity. We saw Orbit has moved into, it was moving into Port Orange and Renton Space from Ray...
Radon.
Radon. Sorry. I'm like, it's two first names, I can't remember. Actually, it is their first names, the guy that started the company, Ray and Don. But this is a great opportunity, and people recognize that we're close to the, you know, the Cape. And certainly having Riddle here is, is a huge opportunity, the research center. But that is definitely one of the things, you know, we all talk about Bright Flight, where people graduate from here, either high school or college, and don't come back. You know, this is an opportunity to keep some of those graduates, both the, you know, the high school kids and the college kids, that there'll be opportunities here for them that currently don't exist.
Fantastic.
Mr. Mayor, in the absence of Commissioner Henry, can I say something else?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I would be remiss if I didn't also recognize the fact that Deputy Chief Jakari Young was recognized at the Emerald Ball as well. And Ms. Presley chose 44 because of Barack Obama, President Obama being the 44th president. And I also wanted to say, when we added to the bike funds today, my $500 contribution to the Blackmail Explorers, I was so impressed with that program. I knew about the program, but until I saw those young men perform and speak so highly of Mr. McKinney and the other men that helped them, and Ms. Presley's the parental liaison, I never knew what they really, really did. And I believe that Commissioner Henry's son participates in that group. And my expediting these funds is because they're about to take them on a college tour trip. And I want you all to consider that. We've gotten our Bike Week funds. If you're looking for something to give, give to, consider the Blackmail Explorers at Bethune-Cookman University. So often, we hear in the news about black males and how they're losing their lives and how they're involved and engaged in so many other activities that are not life-sustaining, let's say. But this is something that Bethune-Cookman is offering our community, young men, Blackmail Explorers, that is giving them an opportunity to be who God has ordained them to be, young, promising men from our community. So consider that group, if you will. That concludes my comments for certain.
Very good meeting tonight, and I want to say that the Emerald Ball was a great experience for me, and I enjoyed it greatly and appreciate the recognition and the recognition of the other men, and as well as the venue. The venue was awesome. It was at the Hard Rock, and it's just another great venue in our community that is being used in a very professional and promising way. I also was delighted that our son was speaker for the presentation. And so it was just a good evening for us as a family and for our community. So many great things. As was stated, the Hometown Heroes was unusually impressive this year. It's always a great event, and I hope a staple. It's been around now, what, I think, 16 or 19?
Today is Juneteenth.
Today is Juneteenth. But it was just a fantastic evening this, this year. It just did something extra to my, to my spirit. So in many ways, we're in a, in a good space as a community. And I would just admonish us to continue as a commission to try to take advantage of positive opportunities, and we're doing a better job with communicating. This is, the manager's not here, but this is just about as good as it gets for me about expressing what's going on in the community. It's just a way, it helps me to be able to succinctly say to people, you know, what's going on in a given month. All I have to do is pull two of these out, and I can just say, "This is what's going on in our community." If I go to a community meeting, and so if you're listening, and this is online, you can go online to codb.us and find this information, along with an enormous amount of other information that takes, takes place in our city. We have a lot of very good things going on. And as I said at the Emerald Ball, or after the ball was over, and then when we had these two ladies to show up, and their qualifications are that they could either, one, be the executive director of our shelter, but they don't want a job, but they want to do something that's good. We don't have a shortage of people who are trying to do great deeds and greatness in our community to no benefit for themselves. So with that said, I'm continuing to be humbled and delighted to serve in the capacity that I do, and want to hopefully push us forward. This meeting is adjourned. We will take public comments right away. You know what? Okay, we record this? Charles, you're going to have to send out a big file off of YouTube, off of PowerPoint. I got a big one. Okay, I might need your help after the meeting. Louis, Louis is going to need your help. Okay, go ahead.
Marjorie Johnson?
You're the first speaker?
Yes, Ms. Johnson?
Greetings, everyone.
Greetings.
Pleasant night. I've come here tonight, and I would like to say to all of you that I'm on the board, Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Q Street. I was appointed by Ben Johnson, who I got elected to office, and they're doing outstanding work over there at the county. And I was appointed to that board, and I spoke up at the first meeting, and now the library is going to be open on Saturday, the Q Street Library. It has been open when they first started, then they closed it down. So also, I asked them to extend the hours, and they extended the hours from nine to seven on Thursday, and from nine to six on Mondays. So this is also going to be in the newspaper, and I put it on my Facebook so that people would know that that library will be open to the public. Also, I would just like to say Midtown needs a revitalization. I hear a lot of social stuff going on here, but I would like to get down to these roads that have been neglected for many years, especially in my zone. All right in front of the mosque there, all cracked up, Bethune-Cookman University, terrible. I mean, you know, we're looking at my commissioner, is Reed, who's been here seven years, started in 2012, it's 2019, and you, Mayor, have been here, we don't see any change. And I'm glad that we are spending money on B Street, I supported that. But I'd like to see this money put all over the city of Daytona Beach. And I like to see those roads paved. And I'd like to say insanity is sitting here collecting her future and not getting your work done. And I'd like to see you more enthusiastic about getting this done. This is why you, it's hard to do your job. And I'm not seeing those roads being paved. I went there the other day, and it was tearing up my tires, especially there by Martin Luther King, Paine, and all those streets. Also, I'd like to see some of these lawsuits that's coming through here, start. Sonia Wiles, an employee here for 23 years, sued this city for ten counts of harassment and discrimination by Deputy City, Assistant City Manager Ron Mclemore. And also, Mr. Heinous called her a dog. And so she took and got over half a million dollars from this city for this racism, discrimination that she suffered. And hugely suing this city. They came here and subpoenaed me to come over there and talk about what he went through here in this city. And the fact that I was called to testify, I didn't care that they came and gave the subpoena here to me at the city, because there is a lot of racism, discrimination, and hardcore racism going on. Chisen fired Sonia Wiles, and she reported racism, discrimination, and harassment at the Public Works Department. So we want you to stop treating these employees and treat them with dignity and respect, and get these roads paved. It's time to make it happen.
Yes, ma'am.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Ann Ruby.
John Nicholson, 413 North Granville Avenue. A couple of things, one on the rec center. Yeah, the numbers changed, just like at First Step Shelter, just like at the pier. Remember, the pier renovation was supposed to be a million bucks? Ended up like $6 million out of our pocket and another $4 million from them. Things change. Proactive staff, hurricane windows are very expensive. They were not in the original thing. So there are things that are changing that would cause this. I know when they wanted to do Cypress Street Gym, that cost several million. So money does add up, but we have to do what we have to do. Secondly, City Island, a big article. We all knew that the courthouse, for some reason, the city gave things away, like the beach and whatnot, but we gave the land away. The library, of course, rebuilt it. It's a revert clause, just like a Cornelia Young Library. If for any reason they don't use it as a library, it comes back to us. So technically, the only land that we really would have to worry about is the courthouse, and they could develop that. It's already developed, so if they went from a courthouse to a convention center or hotel, one development is the same as any other development. Only it would help us tremendously if they did redevelop it. Secondly, on the food trucks, it's very deceiving to say 250 feet. From A1A, 250 feet does not include the boardwalk. So food trucks could go all along the boardwalk. So it's, when you say 250, realize that that is not in the 250 feet from A1A. So it can't be just 250 feet, there has to be other rules, which I'm going to follow up on. But 250 feet, I have the maps there, if you want. 250 feet leaves the boardwalk out. Harassment, I asked the mayor in the past, that we really have to have a policy on harassment because we had so many of it, and now it's all over the place, that if any woman feels harassed, there is a formula, they go to this person, they go to this person, they go to that person. That way, we're covering our butt, that we will not have to worry about lawsuits, because it was very costly. But we do have to have a definitive policy.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ann Ruby, and on deck is Jim Schultz.
I don't know why people get upset when we have that little blue banner going across. Come on, Ms. Ruby, but it, it needs to be going up there, that little blue banner.
Hi, Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. I want to give you a little background on the City Island Rec Center, since you were a little confused about where those original numbers came from. In 2017, they were came, they were both, they were prepared by the tech services, by the city staff. And those numbers said that it would be 92 demolish and 145 to restore to current code. Then the city manager wanted to update that study because it was too old, so set out to do that. But in the interim, in July of 2018, repair estimates were given by United Water Restoration. July 2018, asbestos abatement reports were given, also in March. Lead paint reports were given in March of 2018. Surgon Building Consultant gave a repair estimate in February of 2018. Hurricane damage was assessed in October of 2018 by an outside group, and the HVAC was done, they had, did HVAC evaluations in 1982 and restoration modification, restoration modification in 1996. So there were a lot of documents available, a lot of new information available, when the city went back, the same city staff, tech services, and did another evaluation in 2018. And then, in that case, the cost to demolish dropped by half, and the cost to repair went up by half. So then, instead of having a $55,000 differential, it was $167,000. And that's when you all decided to hire this consultant. Now, the consultant came back, he hired a half of the fee for him, was an architect. And, and I don't know, once you get architects involved, things get crazy expensive. But if you look at his 75-page spreadsheet, that there's $40,000 for windows, $40,000 for a roof, $215,000 for the HVAC system, $210,000 for the electrical system, $40,000 for the telecom system, this is a 6,000-square-foot building. Those numbers don't make sense. So really, this needs very careful evaluation. I would take this report with a grain of salt and ask, "Why are these numbers so vastly different?" And ask to look at those other reports that were done in early 2018, before the city did their second evaluation. I trust our city staff, and I would be shocked if the true differential was there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our final speaker tonight is Mr. Jim Schultz.
Jim Schultz, 117 Harvard Drive. Yeah, the more things change, the more they stay the same sometimes. Albert Einstein once said, "Definition of insanity is repeating the same action expecting different results." I'm happy we had Juneteenth. I'm not so happy for the weather that happened. What I wanted to cover was an issue on vitamin D. Hollis and Wagner, back in 2009, did a study, well, actually, ended up going 10 years, but at four years, they gave the results. You could cut premature births in half by giving 4,000 international units of vitamin D. Black women were three times more likely to be severely deficient and thus have the issues. But it wasn't just premature births, it was also underweight kids, it was babies, it was also pre-ascansia, gestational diabetes, infections in the mamas and the babies. So what happened? Not much, because the Health Department, when I went and talked to them, said, "We must remain cautious and not do anything until we're directed." Went over, talked to Dixie Morgees, healthy start. Her, "I would if I could, but I can't, I'm only a nurse." In other words, ignorance reigns occasionally because people choose not to see. Hey, it's a choice, sort of like the pig and the poke, except the pig is looking at you, and you say, "I'm not going to look." You know, it's a bad joke, but unfortunately, I think public health likes that joke. How did the RDA get set? Hector DeLuca, with the most conflicts of interest, the most vitamin D analog patents in the world, said it. He said, "Let's make this easy. Let's not look at the thousands of studies they have on vitamin D. Look at vitamin D for bone health. We already know about that, and it doesn't take much to make an improvement." His, he took 3,000 a day. They end up setting a standard of 600. Another university looked at it and said, "They made a mistake. It should have been 10 times higher. They screwed up on the math. Nothing changes."
Our final, final speaker is Brittany Presley.
Brittany Presley, 1575 Aviation Parkway, Unit 405. First, I would like to thank all of the commissioners, the city of Daytona Beach, for allowing me to host my first annual seafood festival in Daytona on May 18th. It was very successful. We had over 30 vendors. Half of our vendors, our food vendors, sold out on that evening. We got nothing but positive feedback from the community. Today, I had an awesome meeting with Assistant City Manager Betty Goodman for a follow-up of the festival. And next Tuesday, I have a wonderful meeting with Mr. Morris for continuing this festival, hopefully for in the future. Again, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity. Again, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to bringing it back. Thank you.
Thank you. Great work, and keep up the good work. This meeting is adjourned. Good night, Daytona Beach.